Good evening. Welcome to the City Council's special meeting this Monday evening, September 15th. City Clerk, please call the role.
Certainly, Mayor Newsom, Councilmember Diaz Nash.
Here.
Councilmember Sverko Guditsky.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine.
Here.
And Mayor Newsom.
Here. At this time, I'll ask our city clerk if any notifications have been requested for her virtual, no, sorry. Disregard. Moving along. We're excited to be here in person with options for those not to be here in person, to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate for those attending in person. Complete a yellow Request to Speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, please raise your hand, use the Raise Your Hand feature on Zoom, and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press *9 to raise your hand, and when called upon, press *6 to unmute. These are the public comments, which will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. We will begin tonight's special meeting with one closed-session item, Conference with Legal Counsel: Existing Litigation. Before we begin, my colleague, Councilmember Fernandez, would like to make a statement.
Hi there. I'm going to have to recuse myself on this matter because I am employed by one of the parties that may be potential to this action.
Thank you. Before we convene to close session, City Clerk, do we have any requests to speak on this closed-action, closed-session item only?
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is to speak on closed session. to speak on closed session. to speak on closed session. to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request
soon. Thank you. soon. Thank you. soon. Thank you. soon. Thank you.
raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return
to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is
soon. Thank you.
for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, I have one hand, no requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. User with the screen name Sue's iPhone, if you wish to speak on the street vending item, that is, will be taken up separately. This is for closed-session matter. Please, oh, that hand was lowered, and now we have no request to speak on closed session.
All right, then we will convene to closed session in Conference Room C and return soon. Thank you.
Before we move on to the next item, Street Vending: Current Regulations, Enforcement Challenges, and Policy Options, I want to note that we have Spanish interpretation available for this item. You may listen to this item in Spanish by joining the meeting via Zoom and selecting the Spanish language channel. If you are attending this meeting in person and require language assistance, please see Manny De Valle and Ron Obrigan from On Point Language Solutions at the back of the Chamber Council. I'd also ask my colleagues to make sure that we do not speak too quickly because we do not want them to be scrambling to translate. So try to speak a little bit longer and more slowly than you normally would. So the next item is-
Mayor Newsom, apologies. My deputy clerk will just translate what you just said into Spanish for our attendees.
Oh, thank you.
Before we move on to the next item, Street Vending: Current Regulations, Enforcement Challenges, and Policy Options, I want to note that we have Spanish interpretation available for this item. You may listen to this item in Spanish by joining the meeting via Zoom and selecting the Spanish language channel. If you are attending this meeting in person and require language assistance, please see Manny De Valle and Ron Obrigan from On Point Language Solutions at the back of the Chamber Council. I'd also ask my colleagues to make sure that we do not speak too quickly because we do not want them to be scrambling to translate. So try to speak a little bit longer and more slowly than you normally would. So the next item is-
Mayor Newsom, apologies. My deputy clerk will just translate what you just said into Spanish for our attendees.
Oh, thank you.
Before we move on to the next item, Street Vending: Current Regulations, Enforcement Challenges, and Policy Options, I want to note that we have Spanish interpretation available for this item. You may listen to this item in Spanish by joining the meeting via Zoom and selecting the Spanish language channel. If you are attending this meeting in person and require language assistance, please see Manny De Valle and Ron Obrigan from On Point Language Solutions at the back of the Chamber Council. I'd also ask my colleagues to make sure that we do not speak too quickly because we do not want them to be scrambling to translate. So try to speak a little bit longer and more slowly than you normally would. So the next item is-
Mayor Newsom, apologies. My deputy clerk will just translate what you just said into Spanish for our attendees.
Oh, thank you.
Before we move on to the next item, Street Vending: Current Regulations, Enforcement Challenges, and Policy Options, I want to note that we have Spanish interpretation available for this item. You may listen to this item in Spanish by joining the meeting via Zoom and selecting the Spanish language channel. If you are attending this meeting in person and require language assistance, please see Manny De Valle and Ron Obrigan from On Point Language Solutions at the back of the Chamber Council. I'd also ask my colleagues to make sure that we do not speak too quickly because we do not want them to be scrambling to translate. So try to speak a little bit longer and more slowly than you normally would. So the next item is-
Mayor Newsom, apologies. My deputy clerk will just translate what you just said into Spanish for our attendees.
Oh, thank you.
Before we move on to the next item, Street Vending: Current Regulations, Enforcement Challenges, and Policy Options, I want to note that we have Spanish interpretation available for this item. You may listen to this item in Spanish by joining the meeting via Zoom and selecting the Spanish language channel. If you are attending this meeting in person and require language assistance, please see Manny De Valle and Ron Obrigan from On Point Language Solutions at the back of the Chamber Council. I'd also ask my colleagues to make sure that we do not speak too quickly because we do not want them to be scrambling to translate. So try to speak a little bit longer and more slowly than you normally would. So the next item is-
Mayor Newsom, apologies. My deputy clerk will just translate what you just said into Spanish for our attendees.
Oh, thank you.
Before we move on to the next item, Street Vending: Current Regulations, Enforcement Challenges, and Policy Options, I want to note that we have Spanish interpretation available for this item. You may listen to this item in Spanish by joining the meeting via Zoom and selecting the Spanish language channel. If you are attending this meeting in person and require language assistance, please see Manny De Valle and Ron Obrigan from On Point Language Solutions at the back of the Chamber Council. I'd also ask my colleagues to make sure that we do not speak too quickly because we do not want them to be scrambling to translate. So try to speak a little bit longer and more slowly than you normally would. So the next item is-
Mayor Newsom, apologies. My deputy clerk will just translate what you just said into Spanish for our attendees.
Oh, thank you.
Before we move on to the next item, Street Vending: Current Regulations, Enforcement Challenges, and Policy Options, I want to note that we have Spanish interpretation available for this item. You may listen to this item in Spanish by joining the meeting via Zoom and selecting the Spanish language channel. If you are attending this meeting in person and require language assistance, please see Manny De Valle and Ron Obrigan from On Point Language Solutions at the back of the Chamber Council. I'd also ask my colleagues to make sure that we do not speak too quickly because we do not want them to be scrambling to translate. So try to speak a little bit longer and more slowly than you normally would. So the next item is-
Mayor Newsom, apologies. My deputy clerk will just translate what you just said into Spanish for our attendees.
Oh, thank you.
Before we move on to the next item, Street Vending: Current Regulations, Enforcement Challenges, and Policy Options, I want to note that we have Spanish interpretation available for this item. You may listen to this item in Spanish by joining the meeting via Zoom and selecting the Spanish language channel. If you are attending this meeting in person and require language assistance, please see Manny De Valle and Ron Obrigan from On Point Language Solutions at the back of the Chamber Council. I'd also ask my colleagues to make sure that we do not speak too quickly because we do not want them to be scrambling to translate. So try to speak a little bit longer and more slowly than you normally would. So the next item is-
Mayor Newsom, apologies. My deputy clerk will just translate what you just said into Spanish for our attendees.
Oh, thank you.
Before we move on to the next item, Street Vending: Current Regulations, Enforcement Challenges, and Policy Options, I want to note that we have Spanish interpretation available for this item. You may listen to this item in Spanish by joining the meeting via Zoom and selecting the Spanish language channel. If you are attending this meeting in person and require language assistance, please see Manny De Valle and Ron Obrigan from On Point Language Solutions at the back of the Chamber Council. I'd also ask my colleagues to make sure that we do not speak too quickly because we do not want them to be scrambling to translate. So try to speak a little bit longer and more slowly than you normally would. So the next item is-
Mayor Newsom, apologies. My deputy clerk will just translate what you just said into Spanish for our attendees.
Oh, thank you.
Before we move on to the next item, Street Vending: Current Regulations, Enforcement Challenges, and Policy Options, I want to note that we have Spanish interpretation available for this item. You may listen to this item in Spanish by joining the meeting via Zoom and selecting the Spanish language channel. If you are attending this meeting in person and require language assistance, please see Manny De Valle and Ron Obrigan from On Point Language Solutions at the back of the Chamber Council. I'd also ask my colleagues to make sure that we do not speak too quickly because we do not want them to be scrambling to translate. So try to speak a little bit longer and more slowly than you normally would. So the next item is-
Mayor Newsom, apologies. My deputy clerk will just translate what you just said into Spanish for our attendees.
Oh, thank you.
Before we move on to the next item, Street Vending: Current Regulations, Enforcement Challenges, and Policy Options, I want to note that we have Spanish interpretation available for this item. You may listen to this item in Spanish by joining the meeting via Zoom and selecting the Spanish language channel. If you are attending this meeting in person and require language assistance, please see Manny De Valle and Ron Obrigan from On Point Language Solutions at the back of the Chamber Council. I'd also ask my colleagues to make sure that we do not speak too quickly because we do not want them to be scrambling to translate. So try to speak a little bit longer and more slowly than you normally would. So the next item is-
Mayor Newsom, apologies. My deputy clerk will just translate what you just said into Spanish for our attendees.
Oh, thank you.
Before we move on to the next item, Street Vending: Current Regulations, Enforcement Challenges, and Policy Options, I want to note that we have Spanish interpretation available for this item. You may listen to this item in Spanish by joining the meeting via Zoom and selecting the Spanish language channel. If you are attending this meeting in person and require language assistance, please see Manny De Valle and Ron Obrigan from On Point Language Solutions at the back of the Chamber Council. I'd also ask my colleagues to make sure that we do not speak too quickly because we do not want them to be scrambling to translate. So try to speak a little bit longer and more slowly than you normally would. So the next item is-
Mayor Newsom, apologies. My deputy clerk will just translate what you just said into Spanish for our attendees.
Oh, thank you.
Before we move on to the next item, Street Vending: Current Regulations, Enforcement Challenges, and Policy Options, I want to note that we have Spanish interpretation available for this item. You may listen to this item in Spanish by joining the meeting via Zoom and selecting the Spanish language channel. If you are attending this meeting in person and require language assistance, please see Manny De Valle and Ron Obrigan from On Point Language Solutions at the back of the Chamber Council. I'd also ask my colleagues to make sure that we do not speak too quickly because we do not want them to be scrambling to translate. So try to speak a little bit longer and more slowly than you normally would. So the next item is-
Mayor Newsom, apologies. My deputy clerk will just translate what you just said into Spanish for our attendees.
Oh, thank you.
Before we move on to the next item, Street Vending: Current Regulations, Enforcement Challenges, and Policy Options, I want to note that we have Spanish interpretation available for this item. You may listen to this item in Spanish by joining the meeting via Zoom and selecting the Spanish language channel. If you are attending this meeting in person and require language assistance, please see Manny De Valle and Ron Obrigan from On Point Language Solutions at the back of the Chamber Council. I'd also ask my colleagues to make sure that we do not speak too quickly because we do not want them to be scrambling to translate. So try to speak a little bit longer and more slowly than you normally would. So the next item is-
Mayor Newsom, apologies. My deputy clerk will just translate what you just said into Spanish for our attendees.
Oh, thank you.
Before we move on to the next item, Street Vending: Current Regulations, Enforcement Challenges, and Policy Options, I want to note that we have Spanish interpretation available for this item. You may listen to this item in Spanish by joining the meeting And even the payment of that fine would be subject to your ability to pay. But in addition to decriminalization this, the Sidewalk Vendor Act has basically allowed sidewalk vending to take place almost everywhere with some minor exceptions. But you could, you could do on this, you could do it on the public sidewalk, you could do it in the park. They do not touch private property. So if you're trying to vent on private property, we probably could restrict you from being there. But if we were to tell you, you cannot be here on private property, they would simply move to the public right of way where they would be legal. So SB nine forty-six protects them there. Also in two thousand eighteen, the state passed the Micro Enterprise Home Kitchen Operations Act. We'll call it MICO, which allowed home kitchens not only to cook and sell, but also to serve their customers on site. And that means that you can have a small home restaurant. And in twenty twenty-two, the state passed Compact Mobile Food Operations Act. It's basically reinforcing what they passed in twenty eighteen and even spelling out what could be done, what they meant by limited food preparation. And I will just with your permission, read you quickly that limited food preparation, which is what you can do on the sidewalk, includes heating, reheating, frying, baking, roasting, popping, shaving of ice, blending, steaming or boiling hot dogs, slicing or chopping food or produce, cooking or seasoning to order, juicing or preparing beverages for immediate service and dispensing and portioning it all to immediate service to your customers. Now let me give you a couple of examples, how the state law interacts with the municipal code. You can see at the bottom of the screen, in our municipal code, we have a rule about home occupation. And we used to be able to enforce it because if you have a home occupation, it's legal for you to have it. You can process information or you can even have clients coming in. Maybe you are an attorney, an architect or a music teacher. So in our zoning ordinance, there is a rule that allows you to conduct a home business. It says you cannot have an employee with you, only you can conduct the business and you can have up to five customers or clients per day. Well, that was before twenty eighteen. In twenty eighteen, as I said before, the MICO Act allows you to have one employee plus an unlimited number of household members or family members who would be assisting you in your home restaurant. And it allows you to serve up to thirty meals per day. This is what it says. I would like to read it with your permission because it gives you the sense what, how the state law, it's itself against the zoning ordinance, which we're here to enforce. A city shall not prohibit the operation of, require a permit to operate, require a rezone of the property for, or levy any fees on, or impose any other restriction on a home kitchen operation in any residential dwelling for zoning purposes. A home kitchen shall be a permitted use of residential property in any residential dwelling for zoning purposes if the home kitchen abstains from posting signage, advertising it, and is in compliance with applicable local noise ordinances. So if you have a home restaurant, we can tell you not to have a big sign on your garage door and not to be too loud. Other than that, you can do this even if you're in a residential zone. Another part of the same MICO Act says that you can also have and operate an open air barbecue or outdoor wood burning oven. Because where else would you do barbecue? But when you put those things together, you can see in San Mateo, something like this. This is in front yard of somebody's single family home. It's a small restaurant. You cannot see a table and chair there, but they are on the right of that stove. This is one example. Another example is we have on our books, a rule that was passed in nineteen thirty-seven, minus nineteen thirty-seven. I don't know if any of the council members were here at that time, but that was passed. And this rule says, no person shall stand or park any vehicle, wagon or pushcart from which goods, whereas merchandise, fruits, vegetables or foodstuffs are sold to exceed ten minutes at any one place. This rule has been on the book for about eighty-eight years. And we until recently could enforce it. And in fact, we still can enforce it against food trucks. Because food trucks are not protected by SB nine forty-six. But we cannot enforce it against anybody else. Because in two thousand eighteen, the SB nine forty-six specifically allowed stationary sidewalk vending. And it says that the city cannot restrict vendors to operate only in designated neighborhoods. We cannot prohibit vendors in parks with some minor exceptions. We cannot prohibit stationary vendors in commercial zones. And we cannot adopt any regulations about the time, place and manner of sidewalk vending that are unduly restrictive. And in commercial areas, the limitations that we can impose on sidewalk vendor cannot be more restrictive than those that we impose on regular business. So that means that if you have a grill where you cook your chicken, you could park it in front of a restaurant, brick and mortar restaurant and be there all day. These are the challenges where the state law clashes or overpowers the municipal code. And let me just give you a couple of examples about the impracticality of strict enforcement. Couple of issues, I don't have any pictures for that because they're obvious. In order to enforce anything, just to write an administrative citation, you have to have some sort of identification. And if you cannot get identification from someone, anyone, you cannot issue them even an administrative citation or even a warning, or you cannot even write them a letter to guide them towards compliance. You don't have the information. We have been encountering difficulties like this. People do not produce their identification. The second difficulty is that we in code enforcement do not work on weekends or nights. And I don't know why, but people like eating on weekends and nights. They just do that and therefore they attract a lot of vendors who would like to satisfy that need. So we have difficulties with human nature, if you were to ask me. But in addition to that, there are also difficulties of impracticality. How do we enforce things when the state law allows something and the municipal code doesn't allow something? And then the categories between private property and public right of way are fluid. Because you can move from one place to another very quickly. And the categories between motorized, like food trucks, and non-motorized, like a pushcart are also, can also be blurry. Because something that was motorized just a minute ago may become non-motorized five minutes later. Let me give you a couple of examples. In this example, you see a grill on wheels parked on private property. It's a, a big parking lot. And we have a rule in our municipal code that says that we can require that if somebody is on private property, that they get permission from the property owner. So in theory, we could approach this vendor to say, do you have permission from the property owner? It is unlikely that he will have a letter in his hand. So we can't say, look, you cannot be here without permission. The, what it will do simply is that he will move twenty feet away and he will be on public right of way where he is protected by SB nine forty-six. And there we would not, he wouldn't, he doesn't need any, anyone's permission to do that. Another difficulty in street enforcement is, as you can see on the right-hand side, you see a trailer. And a trailer is non-motorized because it's disconnected from anything. So it cannot propel itself. It cannot move. So as a non-motorized vendor, this business is protected by SB nine forty-six. And therefore, if they park there, they, they can serve food. Now in this case, what's interesting is that they, instead of blocking the sidewalk where they could set up a chair or two, they found a location next to a nice front yard and they set their table right there. And moreover, now they also use the space behind this tent inside the space. And this happens to be a big commercial street where a restaurant would be allowed. So the question is, do you, what do you enforce exactly here? Do you ask the space to pull a restaurant permit? When they're not cooking anything inside the restaurant? Do you tell them to pull a permit to approve the tent in front? Well, they don't need a permit for that. So what exactly do you want to regulate here? Another example similar to this, in this case, this is a food truck also parked in front of a property. Now, this property doesn't have a MICO permit, but we will guide them towards compliance. And in theory, they could get a MICO permit because any normal kitchen with hot water can get it. In this case, we could shoot away, we could tell the truck to move on if they stay in one location for ten minutes. But in reality, it probably not change anything because the food would be prepared inside the home and just brought out into that tent in somebody's front yard. Another issue is that you don't want to create an impression of selective enforcement. And in this case, you see in your picture, a trailer on the left and a food truck in the middle. So if you were to tell the food truck to go, but you would allow the trailer to stay, anybody would say, what are you doing? Why are you lying one business and picking out, picking up on another? So to summarize, the state laws protect home kitchens. They protect roaming pushcards and stationary tents in public ways and in parks. The boundaries between private property and public way and between motorized and non-motorized are permeable. The violators very often do not have identification and code enforcement does not work on nights and weekends. I don't want to paint picture that we do nothing because that's not the case. I want to let you know what we can and what we do enforce, in fact. Businesses are supposed to have business tax certificates. It's easy to comply with. All they need to do is to pay thirty-one dollars a year and they will comply with this section. We can enforce and we have enforced the ten-minute limit of staying in one location against food trucks only because they're not protected by SB nine forty-six. We, parking enforcement has marked up trailers and food trucks for the seventy-two hour parking limit. Again, it's only against trucks and trailers, but not against any other vendors. We can enforce the owner's permission to be on private property. But again, that would simply push people towards public right of ways. And it's not clear that that would solve any problem and not exacerbate it. We do enforce and ask people not to block public sidewalks. And they usually comply because they don't want any trouble. They don't want anybody tripping on their electrical cords. So we have been successful in this respect. And as far as county health permits, obviously the health officer is the county of San Mateo. This is in our code. So we do not have legal authority to enforce not having health permits. However, we do encourage people and sometimes we go out with the health inspectors on site to give them the flyers and to educate them how to get a health permit. County itself does not enforce anything, but they educate and they show how to comply. And just a test case, imagine somewhere in the city of San Mateo, a big intersection, very busy, a lot of hundreds, thousands of car passing by every day, very visible location, nice to be there. And it happens to be a patch of land that belongs to the city, doesn't belong to anyone. Nobody knows. You know, there's no ownership there. And imagine that there's a huge parking lot next door, very convenient. And you set up your tent there and you attract a lot of people because your photographs are on Instagram and those photographs show mouthwatering pieces of al pastor or whatever that happens to be. And it is a very good location. So let's say that the city decides to pass a new ordinance, which other cities have done, and I will tell you a little bit about this in a moment. But let's say you can write an ordinance which says that no vendors or no obstructions should be made within, say, hundred feet of a major intersection. And that would cover that area. So by law, they cannot be there. Well, you're a code enforcement officer now working at night and you have this brand new beautiful ordinance. You go out there and you see people about to set up. You don't want to go there when there is a long line of hungry customers there. But you, you don't want any inconvenience, but you want to stop them before they actually set it out. So you speak to the people and you tell them, look, you don't have permission to be here. Please go away. And they may even go away. Guess what? It's a good location. So they come back next day. What do you do? Your next step would be to write a warning or administrative citation. For that, you need an identification which they do not produce. What do you do? Do you call the police? Do you ask the police to identify them in the field, maybe take foot fingerprints? What exactly do you do, even though you have a rule on your books? These are questions that I don't know answers to, but these are something to consider when city council chooses options. You may be wondering what other cities have done. In our neighborhood, we have approximately sixty, sixty-five percent of cities that do have a dedicated ordinance. We do not. We have different rules spread out throughout the code, but we do not have a dedicated ordinance. Those cities that do have the dedicated ordinance, they passed it since two thousand eighteen, since the SB nine forty-six. And in their rules, they regulate things. They prohibit sidewalk vending activities within maybe four foot of, they have to leave four foot minimum sidewalk clearance, access to fire hydrants, they have to be within two hundred feet of a toilet or a hand washing facility, which means that there probably have to be somewhere closer to a public park, if you take it seriously. They cannot block access to private properties. They cannot block ADA ramp, bus stop and so on and so forth. They have to have seller's permit, health permit, business license, tax certificate. All this is true on paper. When we ask them, how do you enforce it? The answer is usually, we don't have such a big problem with them anyway. So that's the answer. Any ordinance that may exist on paper only is as good as it is being enforced. And so now we would like to tell you about the four options that we think you have. Continue current protocol, modify current protocol, develop a new one and engage with state legislature to develop it a little bit. Continue current protocol means that we would respond to complaints as before and within the legal and practical limits that I've just described, we would guide vendors towards compliance, obtaining business tax certificate and health permits. Option number two, we could modify our current protocol if you direct us to do so. For example, we could enforce, continue to enforce the seventy-two hour parking rule against trucks and trailers, but not any other street vendors. We could attempt to improve collection of sales taxes, although it's, it's a long shot, but we can try to do this through the mechanism of the business tax certificates. We could prohibit vendors from operating on private property, as I said before, without permission from the property owner, but that would simply push them towards the public right of way. And we can explore strengthening communication and collaboration with the county health department on permitting and enforcement of food vendors. Option number three, develop a completely new protocol. You can direct us to develop a new sidewalk vending ordinance. That could be done. That could bring all the relevant sections under one roof. We could also, that would require, if, if we were to enforce it, that would require night and weekend staff, as I explained before, and that would approximately be two new community officer positions with the police department, approximately at four hundred thousand dollars a ye, a year, personnel and vehicles included. Again, it would not likely to reduce the number of street vendors per se, because we cannot do this. State law prohibits us from do this. It could not ban people from being in parks. We cannot do this. We could restrict stationary vendors in city parks if and only if there is a concessionaire in the park that we have a contract with. Or if our new ordinance says you can have only five. or if our new ordinance says you can have only five vendors, stationary vendors, in the park period. That would probably mean that people would try to come there as quickly as possible because if there's only five, so there would be some competition. But then again, if you're strict and you say, no, 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 you're number six. You cannot be here. That person would go outside on the street and then from there. And so that's one of the options, explore having permanent concessionaire in parks. It will prohibit stationary vendors, but not roaming ones. And of course, as I said before, there is this gray line between different kind of vending. And what exactly, when exactly do you become stationary and stop being roaming? If you have a cart that, like that lady in 1937 photo, and she sat very comfortable in her chair, is she roaming or is she stationary? And if you enforce something on stationary, why don't you enforce something from roaming? Because it seems strange if we said to a roaming person, you cannot stop. You have to keep moving. That would be strange. And so option number four, we think that you might want to explore additional language to be included in the upcoming development of the state legislative platform in support of greater ability for us cities to enforce our own food vending ordinances. Thank you so much. And these are the four options for your direction.
Thank you for your presentation. We will open it up to public comment. Do we have any requests for public comment?
Yes, Mayor Newsom, we received a number of requests to speak. If you do wish to speak on this item and you're participating in our virtual environment, please raise your hand now. If you are in person, please provide me with the request to speak slip. We will be closing the request to speak period and announcing the names of our final speakers. Mayor Newsom, that is a total of five requests to speak, which will set the limit at three minutes per speaker. Our first two speakers will be receiving live translation. So we will go from three minutes to six minutes for those individuals. Our final speaker in chamber will be Kevin Simpson. And our final speaker in the virtual environment will be the user with the screen name Sue's iPhone. So I will call up the first two speakers, Paz and Tomas Minar Suar. I'd like to come on down.
Mr. Clerk, could we perhaps have a Spanish and then a couple of English so we give the translator a break before, or would it be better?
We just have two requests to speak in Spanish. Okay. And Paz is not going to be speaking. And Tomas? Okay. No problem. Thank you. We'll move on to our next request to speak, which will be Diane Whittaker, followed by Kevin Simpson.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom, Deputy Mayor Lorraine, and esteemed councilwomen. Diane Whittaker, I am a 32-year resident of North Central San Mateo and live on the north edge of Martin Luther King Park. During this time, I have watched as this open space transitioned from a seasonal grass park to a year-round artificial turf sports field. Youth and adult teams, predominantly soccer, but some rugby, use the field for practice and games day and night throughout the week and year. Weekends are especially busy with nonstop games from early morning through mid to late evening. The field has lights. It always has. Mobile food carts, stationary food tents, and stationary tables located around the perimeter of the field are numerous. One weekend, I counted 12 at one point. A recent new arrival is an outdoor kitchen, which first appeared about four weeks ago at the corner of Santa Inez and Fremont Streets. Five to six evenings per week, from approximately 5:30 PM to 11:30 PM, a full-sized pickup truck arrives and offloads two, two-by-six tables for food prep and cooking, stools and benches for customers, a large, open-sided tent covering, portable cooking equipment, and a string of lights attached to the Martin Luther King Field perimeter fence. All of this is located between the perimeter fence at Martin Luther King Park Field and the street curb. This intersection is a four-way stop. Vehicles frequently roll through the stop signs. The full-size pickup truck that delivers all the food, furniture, and cooking equipment parks along the curb on East Santa Inez. I am concerned that this outdoor kitchen and parked truck is violating Assembly Bill 413, the California Daylighting Law, which prohibits vehicles from parking within 20 feet of any crosswalk, marked or unmarked. Also of concern is the ability of pedestrians just passing through to safely negotiate the sidewalk. For instance, people with a stroller, a two-child stroller, the width, or someone in a wheelchair. Per the excellent staff report, very detailed, I learned a lot. The state has passed numerous pieces of legislation regarding this topic. However, enforcement falls to local jurisdictions.
Thank you.
Okay.
And our next speaker will be Kevin Simpson.
Thanks, Honorable Counsel, for the opportunity to speak on this. I've spoken to, I think, almost all of you about this problem in the past. This is a problem. No matter how many complaints are actually filed through official channels, people who have to live with an open-air kitchen or a food truck opening up across the street from you deal with real issues, safety issues, noise issues, light issues. I had Klieg lights shining into my front windows. I had amplified music from 4:30 in the evening to 11:30 at night. We had grease dumped in the street that smelled to high heaven when the food truck moved on every night. We had sidewalks blocked. We had a bicyclist injured because cars were stopped in both bike lanes on Humboldt. And the bicyclist wisely went up on the sidewalk and ran into the side of a car backing out of the food truck house. And the police, in their wisdom, felt that the bicyclist was at fault. He was just trying to safely get down Humboldt Street. I've had people get hostile with me because I wanted to use the sidewalk to take my dogs to Gateway Park. These are real issues. As we think about what seems like, according to staff, an impossible conundrum here, people are paying the price for not being able to have the quiet enjoyment of their residential neighborhood because somebody else decides that they're going to set up camp. You got to do something about it. My city council member has a very close connection to a state senator. We saw at least six or eight cities that have ordinances to try and enforce this. How about we all get and talk to the legislature and say, we understand what the good and fine intentions were, but the real-world negative consequences are significant. These are not necessarily wealthy people who would like to be able to go to bed and go to sleep and not find people in their driveway at 2:00 in the morning drunk on beer and trash and garbage and lights. Their kids want to go to sleep so they can go to school the next morning. This is not just a not-in-my-backyard issue. This is a health and livelihood and safety and comfort and quiet issue. And it goes beyond noise. It goes beyond trash. It goes to lights. It goes to music. It goes to being harassed in your own neighborhood by people that you don't even know. So I really hope that we keep our foot on the pedal here and try and do something. And finally, last but not least, this was a great presentation. The residents deserve to see things like this before they're asked to comment on it. So please, if you've got a slide deck, make it available to the public beforehand and not when we are then expected to respond. Thank you. I mentioned that before.
Thank you. And as was mentioned, our final speaker on this item will be with the user with screen name Sue's iPhone. Sue's, please go ahead and unmute your mic.
Hi, thanks for taking my phone. Is it echoing?
We're getting a little bit of an echo. You may have, you may be broadcasting the meeting in your space if you want to lower your volume. Yeah, it's like we lost the request to speak. Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment.
Okay, we'll close public comment. And we'll open it up to questions and comments and direction from the council. Who wants to go first? Nobody wants to go first? Okay, Councilmember Diaz Nash, our birthday girl. Happy birthday, Lisa.
Thank you, Gina Christie. Couple of things. Number one, you made it very clear, the conundrum we're in, given what we want to do and what we can do legally. So are there any laws that we, that are things we can do locally that we are not fully taking advantage of today? So I got a call from a constituent who was concerned that there were food trucks on El Camino that were posing safety risks to people driving out of that office building because they couldn't see around the trucks. And I guess where it was, maybe there's a parking permit program? I'm not sure. But they told me it was a two-hour limit. And would it be possible in situations like that for Laz to go as part of their own ongoing parking enforcement to go and ask those trucks to move because it's been more than two hours? Is that an option? I would just love to ask that question. Or is that just a prioritization of resource and we choose to make or not make?
I'm going to ask our chief of police, Ed Barberini, to come up and answer that question.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Yes, the parking enforcement of food trucks is addressed the same way any other parking enforcement is addressed. As was mentioned in the staff report, there have been instances where we've written numerous tickets to food trucks. And it's just the price of doing business. They just pay the citation and go on with their business. So it has not shown itself as a deterrent, the parking enforcement aspect. It's also difficult because I think we're trying to solve one problem with a unique or an enforcement approach that was never designated to solve that problem. So it's a little bit of a square peg in a round hole. But we have run into examples where we've written multiple tickets to those trucks and they just simply pay the tickets. It's not much of a deterrent.
And what about the example in the agenda report about the one vendor who was, the fines were ratcheted up and eventually he left?
The parking citations were the citations that that vendor was willing to pay on a daily basis. The additional citations were code enforcement citations or administrative citations. So I'll let code enforcement address that.
Okay, thank you. And then one of our public speakers mentioned the daylighting law. I mean, a lot of these are using another law in order to address a problem. It's not, in many cases, natural, but it is an issue. Is that something that we could be doing? I'm just trying to think of, are there any other existing laws available to us that we might be able to take advantage of without infringing on everyone's rights?
Yeah, the daylighting law is also the responsibility of parking enforcement. The daylighting law is a tough law to enforce because we have so many intersections in the city of San Mateo, regardless of whether we're talking about food vendors or just regular cars. It's a little bit of an unusual law. It's not all four corners of the intersection. It depends on what direction you're traveling. But without getting into that now, we have been enforcing that law with the use of our parking enforcement vendor. We usually do that on a complaint basis just because there are so many intersections. We don't have a mechanism to monitor every intersection in the city every day. So when we do get those complaints, those violations, if found, are enforced. But again, that's just a parking ticket and not much of a deterrent for those who are running a business.
Thank you. And have we, maybe this is more for the city manager. Have we ever talked about piloting, finding areas of city property, like where you could invite various food trucks to be, not to impose upon their desire to earn a living, but at the same time, being cognizant of some of the quality of life issues that we hear about?
So we haven't looked into that request that I'm hearing for the first time this evening. But there also are competing priorities here, too. If you look at your business community, the brick and mortar, if the city were to establish a facility or an area for that, that could be, you know, typically it's the private property owner who will take that initiative, not the city, so to speak. And so you could see some potential backlash from your brick and mortar businesses, should the city want to enter into that.
Thank you.
Also, if I can just chime in here, something else to keep in mind is if these food vending operations, if the operators don't have identification or decline to provide identification, that tends to inhibit entering into any kind of agreement with these kind of food vendors to protect the city from liability if they're operating on city property. So that's another complicating factor.
Fair enough. So I guess where I would come out, given all of this, I would absolutely want to use whatever tools we have. I think option number B or two, with the modifying existing programs to see what's realistic. I would be interested in that. But I think the real issue for me is that there are state laws that do not coincide with local laws. And so much as it might be a longer-term solution, I would agree with the public comment about how we need to be more actively engaged with our state representatives to see what changes can be made at the state level. And are there any other cities that would be interested in this? Because we probably can't change state law on our own. But I can't imagine we're the only city in all of California that has this, these issues. But also to be protective of rights of people. So is there something, because it's been several years since some of these laws have been in effect, could something happen at the state level? So I think that's worthwhile pursuing. So that's where I come out. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Happy birthday again. Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you.
Yep.
Happy birthday, councilmember. I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight on this important topic. This was my blue sky item. And I will say this is one of the top three issues that I have had my residents, neighbors in North Central discuss with me and bring up with me consistently. And I think that it's a really fine balance because San Mateo is a community that values entrepreneurship, but we also want to be kind to our neighbors. And sometimes those are in conflict with each other. And that is an issue that we are facing right now. I also want to just make sure to comment on the bigger elephant in the room in the fact that we have some things happening on the federal level and many of our local entrepreneurs might feel targeted, especially if they are from the North Central community. So I want to just say right now, we are a city that respects everybody, no matter your national origin, no matter where you come from, no matter how you got here. That said, this is a quality of life issue, especially in North Central. And so I have a couple of questions that I just wanted to find out about. What would be the possibility if we did enforce the 10-minute rule? Is that something that is realistic?
Yes. The 10-minute rule is the only still-standing rule that the city, I believe, can enforce. But it can be enforced only against a one-quarter segment of the food vending in general. It can only be enforced against food trucks.
Not then, not the individual carts?
Not about, yes, not against carts or trailers or stationary. Food trucks, yes. And that is what we have done, which is described in the AR, in the agenda report. So it can be enforced against food trucks. The difficulties, of course, is that it would have to be enforced uniformly. You cannot just be chasing one- You cannot just be chasing one truck and letting three others stay. You have to provide uniform enforcement, not to be selective. And you would want to do it, hopefully, day and night. And while we could make an effort to do it during the day, and that's what we have done in part, but we are not there, and I'm speaking about code enforcement, we're not there at night or on weekends. And provide, to provide that coverage, there would have to be some resources redistributed.
Okay.
Just to chime in, I think it'd be very difficult, even in talking with our police chief, you have to have someone standing, a staff person standing there and witnessing the 10 minutes, being on the clock, basically. And as they move, then you're gonna have to go again and stand right there and wait the 10 minutes again before you ask trucks to move on. Ed, is there anything else that I'd be missing with that? I know our chief has looked, looked into all these matters here.
Yeah, we were asked to, to evaluate the feasibility of enforcement. We suggested to community service officers to supplement what code enforcement would do during the day. That would give us six days a week, coverage eight hours a day of just police enforcement. But again, you have to on view the violation for the 10 minutes. So you're watching a truck for 10 minutes and you have to be able to substantiate that a violation actually occurred and they didn't leave and come back. So it would be challenging. I don't know whether that type of investment would, would yield the results that the city would be interested in. I'm not, I'm not sure how effective that would be. Code enforcement may have a better answer for you, but from a, from a police perspective, it would be very labor intensive and I don't know that it would have the impact that we are looking for.
Okay, thank you. Don't, don't leave. Please don't leave. So where I receive most of my complaints about this item are around MLK in North Central and along the Humboldt Corridor. Is there anything that we could do to up enforcement there? Just specifically, I get a high number of complaints around MLK. Can we have more people just focusing on MLK? And the surrounding areas? Is that a possibility? Is that preferential? That's, in my district, that's where the big problem is.
So I think there's a whole nother rule just on MLK on park site, on city parks, where we're very limited in what we can enforce. And that's what Eugene mentioned in the actual presentation. We kind of are hang, literally handcuffed to be able to enforce, whether it's mobile food vending, whether it's stationary food vending in that area. The only enforcement option that we have would be this 1937 code of 10 minutes with a food truck. But once again, you're picking, you know, you're picking on one subset of the vending population as well. And then it goes back to what the police chief had stated, that you have to physically be there and view it for 10 minutes.
So we have, aside from that, I appreciate that input. I just wanted to make sure that question was asked. We were asked, or it did seem to indicate that in order for, to be a vendor in the city of San Mateo, you do have to have the $31 vendor license. That's, you have, in order to vend in the city, you have to have that, correct? And current? Is that accurate?
No, sorry to say, no, you need to have a business tax certificate.
Is that the $31?
That is the $31. And this is the only license or permit that the city would provide. Now, the same law in 1937 has another section which says that you shall not vent without the city council permission. 1937. If that had been taken care of then.
I mean, I love that we'd have to bless every single, that would be awesome. Can we? Can we bump up that license fee? Could it be $500? Could it be $1,000? Could we make, could we, could, could we make it substantial so that there's skin in the game and they have to invest in this community and be part of our community instead of being transitory?
Well, no, I mean, it can't be an arbitrary amount.
Whatever. I mean, you know what I mean. We could have like a further study session on it or something.
I mean, the, the business license tax, like in, in order for that to be revised, I mean, you know, that may require voter approval for to change our business license tax scheme. But, so I don't think changing the business tax amount is necessarily something that could be increased like from $31 to say hundreds, hundreds of dollars or $1,000. So and plus, keep in mind that in terms of fees generally, generally speaking, fees cannot be more than the cost of providing the service. So charging a fee in the amount that you described probably is not going to be possible.
Not going to be possible or impossible?
It's very likely not possible.
Is it something that we could explore?
Well, I mean, that's up to the direction of the full council. I think it's extremely unlikely that we would be able to do that.
Okay, well, that was, that would be one of my proposals. Could we look at an ordinance where we have a dedic, so Mr. Simpson and others who live in my, in my area have also indicated the, the safety of backing out of their driveways. Could we potentially have something that would allow an ordinance that would mandate space from a driveway? For one of these food sales things?
I'd have to, I don't have the answer to that this evening, something we could look into further.
Can we look, or, okay, great.
Remember, one of the, if I can, if I can interject the mayor here, I mean, so for when it comes to sidewalk vending, the state law SB 946 allows for the creation of a local regulatory scheme. Some cities do that, but remember, it has to be based on objective local health and safety and welfare related concerns. So if the council wanted to, that would fall under option three, creating a new protocol. And if the council wanted staff to go ahead and explore that, we, we can. But I want to emphasize something that Eugene mentioned earlier is that, you know, with a new ordinance comes, you know, enforcement challenges too. Even if you write an ordinance that's very well thought out, has community input, like the council approves, that requires enforcement and enforcement resources. So as you think through these options, whether it has to do with driveways or anything else, I would just keep that aspect in mind as well.
Thank you. But everything we do up here requires resources. It's just about prioritizing, which is what I feel. So as we're, thank you for, I really appreciate the engagement persona. I appreciate it. I'm here, I'm for here for three and four. Thank you.
My button is not working well.
Ed, can you stay up there?
Councilmember Sorokka.
Just want to say thank you for the very thorough presentation. It was very detailed. Appreciate it. Just a follow up question. You mentioned there were 90 calls for service to PD. So what's the mechanism between PD and code enforcement on follow up for some of those community calls?
It depends on the nature of the call. If it's a call that we can, if it's a parking complaint or something that we can address at the, at the police level, we handle that. If it is a code, truly a code enforcement issue, we'll forward that call on to code enforcement.
Can we get as a follow up, the specific numbers? So of those 90 calls for service, how many were code enforcement versus actual PD issues?
Sure. I don't know if we've already designated or delineated that. I don't know if all 90 were parking or police related or not, but I can get that answer for you.
Okay. And then just following up on some of Nicole and Councilmember Diaz Nash's comments, sorry, Councilmember Fernandez. I, I do just want to echo my concern about driveway spaces and also blocking of fire hydrants. I, I do think that we should look a little deeper into that. Those specific concerns. I personally have not witnessed that when I've seen food trucks, but I'd be curious to know if that's creating any potential community hazard or risk. I was curious to know, do we have a roster of the licensed businesses for the city? So who has a food truck, who has a license, who doesn't, et cetera?
Do, we do. Yes, we have a list of people that we know about and we have contacted and we're working with, yes, 29.
So in your, so in your experience, most of the food cart, push cart licenses, trucks have licenses?
Depending on what you call license.
The business tax, sorry.
Business tax, yes. I cannot tell you for sure at this point. I, I would have to get back to you, but they usually do comply. And the only the only case that I can think of that has not complied yet is that he said he was waiting for his documents to arrive. But in this case, he's, he's a trailer. So he has a health department permit, but not a business license with us. So we, he's still operating there.
And do we, so I know you follow up with them. Is there like a time limit that some of these push carts or food trucks have to actually go get that before you cite them?
Yes, of course. We work to, we guide them towards compliance as far as they are willing to go.
Okay, great. That was, those were kind of my comments. Only other comment was the sidewalks, specifically the right of way, you know, making sure that understand state law makes that challenging, but really making sure that we're doing something to make sure, you know, if there's somebody that is disabled or an elderly person or, to Diane Whitaker's comment, a stroller that they can actually get through on the sidewalk. Because that can present other risks. This one's for the city manager unrelated, but there was a comment about presentations. I know that's come up a few times.
So staff, up till this afternoon, that presentation was being developed and refined further. So we wouldn't have the final version until literally an hour or two max before this meeting, if not right before this meeting. Staff is working hard because what happens is, is once the agenda report comes out, we receive questions from the council. And so we'll refine the presentation even further to be able to incorporate some of those questions that council is bringing up. Even the community might start bringing a whole bunch of questions after the gender report has been released and we're continually refining it. And we had a drive, we had a run through this morning on the presentation and still going through further refinements so that we can professionally present to this council and this body.
Okay.
Ask a question about that, or maybe more of a comment just to the public. And that is also that the council has not seen this presentation before as well. So I just, I think it's important that we note that it's, it's not just you that are seeing it for the first time, but so are we.
Yes, and everybody gets to see, basically it's a public document once we release it here. And it's out there. And really, our policy is, is that the council should either see it first or simultaneously with the public.
Thanks. Thank you. Just to clarify.
So just in looking at this issue, thinking about all the facts, where I kind of stand is option one. The east side of 101, similar to North Central and District Two also has a rich history of having food vendors, push carts, food trucks. What I see is these are small enterprise businesses. And if they weren't successful and weren't trying to uphold to the highest ethical and compliance standards, they would be out of business. So I'm in strong favor of keeping with our current protocol. That being said, I do think option four is also interesting, at least reaching out to the state legislature and kind of sharing anecdotally what we're seeing on the ground floor and, and how the laws are actually being applied and the impact to cities. I think that could be something worth following up. But in general, I lean towards option one.
Thank you to the mayor. Thank you, Mr. Alper, for your presentation. I appreciated it. I was just curious about option two of the options you've presented to council today. If we were to pick option two, would more attention be paid to trying to get food trucks and trailers to move after a 72 hour period than, than is currently than, than we currently experience in the city?
I think it's a question perhaps for the chief. Because we're talking about parking enforcement.
Yeah, so the 72 hour rule is, is one that's often misinterpreted. The, the intent of that vehicle code section is to make sure that we don't have abandoned vehicles on our roadways. That's the original intent. The problem with enforcing 72 hour rule is there's often a great deal of frustration because whether it's a food truck or another vehicle, we will get a, a call and a complaint. And we can't proactively do this because unless the vehicle is clearly unoperable, doesn't have tires, or the engine compartment is vacant, we can't just remove a, a car from the, from the roadway. It's private property. The frustration is, is a car may be parked there for a week before we get a call from a, from a neighbor or resident. We have to go put a sticker on it and a 72 hour notice. And then we have to wait an additional 72 hours. If that car doesn't move at least a tenth of a mile in that 72 hour period, then we can tow it. So oftentimes, 72 hours may turn into several days. So I don't, I'm not sure whether, I mean, if, if we were getting complaints about food trucks being parked in excess of 72 hours today, we would, we would do, we would do that. So I don't know that that would change our business practice currently.
I see. Thank you. And I guess I was just curious if, if there was some idea about, other councilmembers have brought up an interest in looking into options, I think beyond maybe the, the current attention paid to obstructions in the sidewalk, to other parts of sort of the streetscape nearby. Is that something that could be potentially explored if we were to pick option two? Because I'm, I'm sort of seeing option two as a step below adding enforcement resources. And so I'm just curious if, if something like that would require those enforcement resources in your opinion to be, to be explored thoroughly?
During the daytime, when code enforcement is there, we are doing this already. We tell people not to block public sidewalks. In some cases, our sidewalks are wide enough so that they can accommodate a table or a chair and leave for foot clearance, because that's what would be required. So we are doing this already to the degree, again, that we can during the day. But the SB 946 specifically says that local jurisdictions cannot restrict street vendors to one designated area.
Okay, thank you. So I guess I appreciate Councilmember Fernandez for bringing this up. I appreciate hearing from members of the public, particularly in North Central for, for sharing concerns and, and highlighting how it affects them. And it does seem, as has been mentioned, that there different people experience this issue differently throughout our city. What stands out to me as we explore this some more though, is that the initial prediction from staff that even if we proposed the strongest provided options, there likely wouldn't be a significant change in the situation on the ground. And so given this, I'm not currently in favor of expending significant resources on something that is not currently part of our strategic plan and is not predicted to have a significant impact. That said, I do think there is some value firstly in exploring the matter. And I also think that there could potentially be some value in additions to our language, updates to our language, that, you know, even if we couldn't exactly enforce it all the time, would have some deterrent value. And I think would help speak to the, the best practices and values of the city. So I'm, I sort of feel that I am interested in, I'm interested in option four, because I think as we develop a legislative platform, this seems to be the sort of local issue that we would want to bring forward to those higher up, share those highlighted pain points and look to find partners who might be interested in getting a sense of how we might be able to move forward with legislation that might help us in that regard. And I, I sort of feel like I'm interested in option two, maybe somewhat like Councilmember Diaz Nash in, in that I, I don't want to feel like we are introducing nothing as a result of this research. Although option four is not nothing. But I, I guess to me, to the extent that we're not necessarily expending significant extra resources would be my interest. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to tell you that I have at least eight minutes worth of questions. So we are going to be starting the general meeting about 10 minutes late. Thank you. So thank you very much for your presentation. I'll, I'll, I won't bury the lead. I am supporting of option two and supporting of option four. And I'd like to go into, with option two, I'd like to see us doing the
And I'd like to go into, with option two, I'd, I'd like to see us doing the maximum amount of enforcement with the resources we currently have on hand. I'd also like to use this as an opportunity to gather more information and to put a case study together for both our local state and state senator and assembly to be able to, to look at these rules and laws. There's, there's some definite holes in, in the way the laws are written now. The, the biggest one being that a push cart driven food vendor has way, way more flexibility than people who are doing things by the book. So if you're running your home kitchen, you're required to go to the county and have a food server, a food handler's certification. You're paying a business license and you're acknowledging that you have a place of address, whether that be your home business or a storefront. And so the fact that, and then if you look at the food trucks, food trucks are also required to have a name, address and phone number on them on each side. And we don't have any similar qualifications for people who are just a mobile cart vendor. I think it's also interesting because there's a lot of different trailers. And in my opinion, like, I think the original intent of it was supposed to be that, that a food vendor that was pushing a cart was able to push a cart. I think when you get into a 18 or 20-foot long trailer that has to have a truck to move it, that that's really kind of gone beyond the pale of what the expectation was initially for their, their rules. I could be wrong, but that's my, my read on it. I've read all this stuff this weekend and it's nauseating. I also read that a CMFO, which is a, what is the term? Compact Mobile Food Operations Unit, a CMFO, cannot have a pop-up tent or multiple piece of equipment. So using a flatbed trailer, for example, with, that requires a, a motor or a car to pull it, technically doesn't fall under the food truck, which, so again, we're back to that, that hole. I see and have heard a ton of concerns about this, specifically from the Marina Market. The owner, a property manager of that has reached out to me and I know, I think has other council members as well. The food restaurants at Bridgepoint are very upset by the, the food vendor that's on the corner of the front of Bridgepoint near the, the, near the on-ramp to the, or off-ramp to the freeway. And, and I've questioned, I guess, I'd like us to go back and look to see whether that really is city property, state property or private property. Because if it's private property, without a doubt, the, the property management does not want them on that property. And it's, it's, it's a, it's challenging to businesses that are here in San Mateo that are paying taxes and are abiding by the rules. And for that reason, we should try to make sure that we're upholding the same rules. Sorry, I'm trying to go through this very fast. Also want to note that we've had complaints about food trailers being dropped in city parking lots. And a question about that would be, I think my read on it is, if you put it into a parking space in the parking lot, that would be one thing. But dropping a city trailer in the middle of Martin Luther King's parking lot is probably not okay. It's a right of way, they should be able to move. And often within that case, trailers are actually being left and driven away from. So there's no way to actually move it without having the car come back. So I don't know, again, but I defer to the city to find that out. Another observation that I've had from people in the central neighborhood is that some of these home restaurants are serving alcohol. So I can't speak to whether they're selling alcohol, but there are definitely people sitting there drinking, drinking beers with what's eating. And I know that that is not legal. And I've had a neighborhood baker tell me, where's, where does that end? If she wanted to sell pot brownies out of her house, like, obviously that's not legal. But again, very gray area because there's no enforcement. When it comes to MLK, I think we should look at and explore the idea of having a food concessionaire because I believe that that would help us with the ability to enforce. When it comes to Trenta Park, I've, there is a food concessionaire, although I don't know if they're recognized as a city concessionaire or not, but the Little League does sell food there and gets frustrated when food trucks pull up, basically pulling away from fundraising food. And so I'd like to look at that too, to see if the Trenta Park are actually a food concessionaire or not. I think we've heard a lot about parking enforcement, daylighting and blocking of visibility from driveways, parking in front of fire hydrants. I think we need to look at all those things and make sure that, to whatever extent we can, that we're enforcing the laws and rules. Sorry, I'm trying to go through my list quickly. There are some empty lots. For example, Rite Aid has, the Rite Aid and Trader Joe's at Concar has quite a bit of empty emptiness. And what had happened was that the vendor there was serving only dinner and now has started to encroach into serving lunch as well. And the pantry, which is a restaurant out there says, geez, I'm, we're the only place here legally with a business license and we pay taxes. And so, you know, the question then becomes, okay, do they have permission to be there? And they've gone back to their landlord and I've actually witnessed that somebody come out from the property management and tell them, hey, you can't be in the parking lot. Then they move into the city sidewalk and they block the entire sidewalk, which again, I don't think is, is allowed because it's okay to be on the sidewalk, but you can't block access and, and ability to pass. And then we've also experienced and seen, and in fact, one of your slides showed this really well, that when these food trucks leave, they leave a bunch of grease on city sidewalks and roads. And I'd like to make sure that if that's the case, that they're paying to have the, the, the street pressure washed because that's only right. And I, again, I'm speaking out of what my concerns are. I don't know how we enforce it. And that's why, as I said, I'm supportive of option two, which is to figure out and do the maximum amount of support and enforcement that we can do under existing laws and then work with our state representatives to fix the holes, identify and fix the holes. I'm sure I have more, but I think that that's good and I promised I'd keep it to eight minutes.
So we have, we have direction council for, we have unanimous majority for option four and then a majority of council for option two. Staff has a direction that they need to move forward and then we can report back in our weekly updates, our implementation of that. Additionally, just for the record, if there is illegal drug sales or alcohol sales, I'm looking at our chief of police that if we have the information, we will enforce for that too. Correct, chief? Here's gonna come on up here, just to be clear.
Ed's getting his steps in today, sorry, chief. No, absolutely. If we are, we don't have the means and we don't, and, and there would be some logistical concerns with proactively trying to investigate those without information. But if we had an identified address that was unlawfully selling alcohol or any substance that they weren't supposed to sell, we would investigate that, absolutely. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. And we'll take a five-minute recess and then restart our regular council meeting. Thank you.